Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the regular, um, school board meeting of the Roseville area schools to order for Tuesday, February 20th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Chancellor Clark.
Here.
Chair Anderson.
Here.
Director Goggins.
Here.
Director Johnson.
Here.
Clark Chu here.
Right, thank you. Any agenda adjustments for this evening?
There are no agenda adjustments.
Okay. Um, that moves us to announcements, um, comments or recognitions, and we do have a recognition, uh, this evening, uh, Ross Activities Director Andrea Schmidt is here to present us. Yeah, come on up to the podium.
I was hoping the students would be here. Told them 6:30. Told them in this building, but I don't see them here, so...
I'd maybe suggest you could keep it fairly brief. Trina will do a double check because I'd love to invite them back if there's another time that they could attend into the future.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, nope. Let's...
Hang on.
I think?
I saw a motion.
Motioning, yeah.
It's worth everyone's wait.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes. Thank you, Andrea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Trina. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Please come up to the tables.
So, this is Atta, Ajedi Mensah, and Atta is Roseville's recipient of the AAA Award. And the AAA Award stands for Academics, Arts, and Athletics.
Oh, wow.
And so each, uh, each year, we nominate one male, one female, and, from our school, and then it goes to the region level and then to the state. And so Atta was our Roseville male AAA Award nominee, and then he actually made it as our Region Four, Double A.
All right. Congratulations.
So, if you would like to ask Atta about all of his AAA stuff that he does, and then when he's done, I will introduce our next student.
Tell us your activities. Why don't you start, please?
Um, so, sports-wise, I do basketball, track, and football. This year, I played football. And then, uh, music, I'm in a lot of music stuff. I'm in the band, and then I do jazz band, and, uh, some wind ensemble and percussion ensemble, and then there's like a combo with the jazz band, and then, uh, technically in choir, and then, or not choir, in orchestra, and then like here and there, I'll help with the choir. Um, yeah, and then, school-wise, normal school stuff. I'm in the, I'm a part of the Avid program, and then, yeah, Athletic Leadership Council, if that counts.
Okay, so, wow. Go ahead, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so, first, wow. Second, so you're, you're, you're in Avid, so, I'm, I'm really impressed that you're in Avid, and you're able to do, um, the band stuff, the music stuff, because that, that has been, from, from stuff that's been brought to me, that, that's been kind of a clash, um, a difficulty for students.
Yeah, so...
How do you do that?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of, it depends on like what the student wants and like their position on stuff, because, at least for me, from an academic level, like from a workload level, like having Avid in band, it makes stuff easier, because like, the, like, the course load in terms of like workload, like Avid isn't going to be the most difficult class, but like it is going to help you, like for college readiness and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah.
And then band is like, band is band, it's going to be work that you have to do, but like, it's also like not going to be the same workload as like an AP class, like, but you're still going to have to put time in it, so like, in terms of, in that sense, it can be helpful, but like, on the other sense, they're both like three trimester classes, and so that's probably the biggest thing, is some kids want to do a lot of electives and stuff like that, and so, if you are in Avid in band, you're not going to have a lot of, a lot of room for your schedule. Like last year, as a junior, I only took six, I only took six courses, which is like not as much because of like 15 credits and stuff like that, because I was in Avid in band, and then I took some APs, and so like, because of that, it's a lot of three tri-courses, so, if you are in Avid in band, it takes a lot away from your schedule, and so some kids probably don't want that.
Well, as, as a, as a former band kid, um, I hats off to you. Um, and you're, you're percussionist? Do you play, you, uh, you, you playing other instruments too?
Um, I play, I play the drum set, and then I do like piano stuff on my own. Like I write, I write music, so like a lot of the, like when I write, it's usually on the piano.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, do like a lot of African instruments, because my dad, um, does African music, and so, I've like grew up in that and play a lot of African instruments and stuff like that. Um, but yeah.
Okay.
Wow.
Just, just, just outstanding. Thank you, um, for your, for your time and your commitment. Um, my, um, is where, my, my, my kid is a graduate and also composes music, and so, so I, I, I get it. Uh, I, any idea, any plans for, you're, you're a senior now, am I correct?
Yeah.
Any, any, any plans for what's next?
Um, I'm not, I'll, I'll go to college. I don't know where yet. I've done like a bunch of applications and stuff like that, but, uh, I have like, have to figure out like, especially like where I've gotten into, there's been like, because of like how this year's been with like FAFSA and like different turning and stuff like that, so, uh, still getting informed and stuff like that, and then see where I've gotten into, and then after the season, after the basketball season has ended, and I know like all the colleges for sure, I'll like take some time and figure out for sure where I'll go.
You have a, sorry, last one. Um, any idea what, um, subject you'd like to pursue? And there's plenty of time, and you can change your mind.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I'm undecided. I've like, I've thought a little bit about computer science, business, or engineering, but, um, I don't, I don't know what else.
Okay, you got a computer scientist over there, you got an engineer over there, so... Feel, feel free to contact either of us, and we'll be more than happy to convince you to take one of the others.
And then add music in that, right? Music technology is, yeah, it's kind of amazing, too. And then you can also be a teacher, that's...
Yes, yes.
That, that's fantastic. I hear you have a special visitor here, right? Do you want to introduce who you have here with you, or...
Uh, my mom.
That is awesome.
Thank you. Congratulations. Wow, yeah.
Who else, yeah, who else do we have? Yep.
We also have Elise Barza, and Elise is a junior, and she is the Roseville Female Excel Award nominee, and similar to Atta, when her application was out there, this stops at the junior's Excel level, um, and she was chosen as the Region Four Excel Award winner in the state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All about you.
Oh, hi, my name's Elise Barz. I'm a junior. Um, I'm in Avid, I started that in seventh grade, and I'm also in the DLI program, and we're learning Spanish.
Nice.
I started in kindergarten, my mom got me into it. I didn't really know about it, I didn't know if I wanted to do it, but she forced me, but it is paying off. Right now, I'm in AP Spanish, hopefully I can get the AP credits for college. Um, I also take college algebra, too. It's kind of kicking my butt, but, but, um, it is going pretty good. I'm pretty happy to take it, hopefully I can get the college credits from that as well. Um, right now, I'm in cheer, I'm the cheer captain, um, we do competition and sideline, we cheer at the games, like the basketball and football games, and we have a competition coming up this Saturday, super excited, the last one of the season.
Awesome.
Um, and I did dance, too. I'm still really passionate about dance, I'm just not in dance lessons anymore. I started that when I was four, started with ballet, and then did jazz, lyrical, and hip-hop is my favorite.
Nice.
Um, what else do I do? Um, I'm in NHS, um, I'm in NHS, started that this year, and another big thing is Black Girl Magic.
Yeah.
Um, I helped out my sister when she started it back in 2020, um, and then this year, it's district-wide, all the Roseville schools are doing it, super excited about that.
Yeah.
Who do you have here with you?
Oh, I have my mother, Alicia, and my sister, Annika, she's a sophomore.
Well, I just, I want to say something first, hold on. It's chair's prerogative. It's, it's just incredible how busy you guys are and how active, just, but I just need to know when you have any downtime? Do you have any downtime? What do you, what do you guys like to do? Just any twenty minutes?
Usually, my downtime isn't downtime, it's downtime that I kind of made. Like I always have something to do, like I should be doing my math homework, but instead, I'm scrolling on TikTok.
Were you at, uh, any downtime? What do you like to do?
Um, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's downtime. It's kind of like, the weekends, the weekends, the weekends are usually like the downtime, like the weeks are going to get pretty filled up, but, uh, the weekends are time, usually Sundays especially, because like there'll be stuff on Saturdays, but then Sundays, usually because of like sports and stuff, like, they don't usually do that much stuff on Sunday, so there's usually time on Sundays, but you can just use that time for whatever.
Rest.
Rest. Okay. In addition, wow, okay. Um, yeah, I would be remiss to say, I, I actually will be at, uh, cheer competition this weekend, just, um, because my, my kid is your coach, so, um, so, kind of, kind of had to do those things, but, because I did, was at those competitions all, all through the years where my, my kid was, was, uh, actually doing them, and now, um...
Now you get to watch your coach.
Yes, so it's, it's crazy. Um, really, really impressive, um, resume, and I, I know, what, I, I'm going to ask the same question, um, what, what's, what's next for you? As, as you, you broadcast forward, what, uh, what are you thinking?
Um, I'm also pretty undecided right now.
And that's okay.
My dad is in business, so I've been considering business, but I do feel like if I found something else that I'm really passionate about, I'll get into that as well. Hopefully, I can get into a nice four-year college, um, get some scholarships, save some money.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd like to stay in Minnesota unless I get a scholarship to somewhere else, and then that might change my mind.
Just, McCallister College is just down the street, just...
You're both going to have colleges competing for each other.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
I, I don't, I don't doubt that.
Yeah.
And, again, computer science or, or engineering, just, just put that in the back. Um, no, I, I don't have anything else, I'm going to be good. Um, but, um, congratulations, thank you for, thank you both for incredible work. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, well done. Congratulations.
And Andrea, thank you for your leadership in pushing the nominations forward and so forth, so thank you.
Absolutely. I always say with these, there are so many kids out there who are, you know, multi-sport athletes, and they're really good students, it's that thing that sets them apart, and it was very obvious to you guys, too.
Very special.
Awesome. Thank you, again.
So great. How do they sleep?
Okay. Um, moving on in the agenda, summary of community input received for action items. I wasn't aware of anything. Received anything from anybody? Any of my colleagues? Nope. Nope. Okay, moving on to the consent, this evening's consent agenda. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda with the exception of, we do have one retirement.
Same as...
Okay.
Second.
Second, all right, so moved in second, and any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Consent agenda has been moved and passed, and we have one retirement this evening.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm moving forward for your consideration, Carol Zen, who is a media technologist assistant at Little Canada Elementary, and she has been with the district for nine years, and we really appreciate her service for our district, and so, uh, entertain a motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then move it in second, the retirement of Carol Zen. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you very much, Clerk Chu, and we thank Carol Zen for her time with the district. And, uh, we do have some gifts this evening. Director Clark?
Sure, happy to do that this evening. Um, our first gift is from Leslie and Karen Suzukamo, um, and they have a monetary gift to the music department at Edgerton Elementary. Next up, Rebecca Sorline, um, a monetary gift for food for students for Fairview Alternative High School. Next, we have Black Ball Connect on behalf of Merle Gady, a monetary gift for school needs at Little Canada Elementary. Next, we have Jess Winkler, a monetary gift for prom and family and consumer science department at the Roseville Area High School. And finally, James and Nancy Perkel, a monetary gift for the music department, excuse me, at the Roseville Area High School. Once again, we like to thank our community for their generous donations to our schools, it's great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Clark. Okay, that moves us to reports and non-action items. First up is the program participation report. Uh, we have a wonderful team here this evening to go over this. Jake, Melissa, Nisita, Andrea Schmidt, and Trina Hira. Welcome.
Thank you. Gathering from all over here, so...
Jake and team.
Jake and team.
Well, thank you for having us this evening. We are, as you can see, um, going to provide our program participation report. Uh, I'm Jake Von Lindy, the Director of Student Achievement, and I have a team with me that I'll just have them kind of go down the line here and introduce themselves and their role in the district as well, so, Trina.
Hi, Trina Hira, I coordinate advanced academics and talent development in the district.
And Andrea Schmidt, Activities Director and Associate Principal at Ross.
Good evening, Nisita Thomas, Director of Student Services.
Hello, everyone, Melissa Sonic, I get to be the Assistant Superintendent for Roseville Area Schools.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So, we're going to start off with our first slide, which is about the district goals and our key strategy. So, um, we have five goal areas, and, and this report actually fits, um, in at least one of these areas, um, I found things that, that would connect, um, and you can see in the, kind of the teal color, the, those areas that really stood out in each of those five areas. So, delivering a challenged, joyful, and safe learning environment, amplifying student leadership and voice and decision-making, as we're having activities, athletics, different programs for our students, supporting learner resiliency with student social, emotional learning and mental health. As we all know, creating those activities, athletics, all those different ways of getting us connected to, um, to school are a benefit to our students. Building a culture of belonging, where all feel welcome, included, and safe, um, and then there's also that building a culture of belonging for our community as well, as we know our community comes together for a lot of our, um, different, um, events. And then the last is cultivating and maintaining that community trust. When we bring people in, we know that we're building that, that trust and relationship with our district. We have three different, um, sections to this report. We have information about our advanced academics and talent development program, our activities and athletics, and then our special education. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Trina Hira, and she'll walk us through our advanced academics and talent development section.
All right. So, as per the Minnesota statute, um, we have guidelines for identifying, for assessing and then identifying students for participation in advanced academics and talent development. We choose assessments that are valid and reliable and fair to underserved, um, student groups, although that, uh, as you'll see in the, in the results in just a minute, is something that is trending to where it needs to be, but historically has not been where it needs to be. We universally screen all students using the Hope Teacher Rating Scale in kindergarten and first grade, and we screen all students using the Cognitive Abilities Test in second and fourth grade. We consider other assessment data as well. This data represents students who have been formally identified as gifted in grades two through 12. We currently formally identify students, um, again, in grades two and four, so we use that screening data from kindergarten onward. Um, starting last year, um, actually, starting a few years ago, we began identifying students in grades two and four, and that's a change from the past, when we would identify them in three and five, but grades three and five are heavy testing years for our students, and so that took some of the pressure off, um, in those years. So, looking at this slide, a reminder that, um, in this data, a proportionate amount for each student group is considered 1.0, indicated by that red line and arrow. To be proportionate means that the group of students identified in our advanced academics and talent, um, development program matches the overall population for that group. Over time, American Indian and multiracial students have increased in their proportionate rates of participation. However, we continue to see many of our BIPOC student groups remain underrepresented and underserved. Our white students continue to be overrepresented. This graph shows more student groups represented in our advanced academic talent development program, and as you can see, our multilingual learners are students who receive educational benefits, and students who have an IEP are still well underrepresented in our advanced academics program. The proportionate line is well above the lines even represented in this graph. Finally, a little bit of good news. So, this slide, um, I think somebody on the board had requested this last year, these are students, um, that were identified in a particular school year. So, for example, um, 2022, 23, if you look at the end of the, the chart, those are only the second and fourth grade students that were identified that year. Okay? So, um, as I talked about before, we changed our identification processes, we also have changed just our vision and our thoughts of how we're looking at gifted education, as the state describes it, and we're more looking for finding student strengths and trying to, um, give students opportunities to develop those talents. So, this data is showing some promise as we've made these changes. Our white students are becoming, um, less over-identified over time. We can see increases in our BIPOC and multilingual learners. Um, and just recently, we completed our 23-24 identification, and our data is indicating continued improvement for especially our multilingual learners and our students who qualify for educational benefits, so we're very pleased about that. All right, I'm passing it on to Melissa Sonic.
All right, thanks, Trina. I will now shift to activities and athletics, which pertains to grades seven through 12. Activities are grouped into four categories that you see here, academic groups, athletics, clubs, and fine arts. Uh, what you see on this next slide here is a visual example of what our secondary activities entail. As you can see, there's a wide range of opportunities, um, for students to engage in, and with that, I'll turn it over to Athletic Director Andrea Schmidt.
Thank you. Okay, so similar to slides previously, this graph shows data for the past five years, the trend of activities. This one is broken down by race. Um, as you can see, we put an asterisk in the 1920 and 2021 school years. The third trimester, or mostly the spring season of 1920, we were not in school in person, and there were no activities. And then the 2020-21 school year was heavily impacted by students not being in person. There were still activities offered that year, but at a reduced schedule. So, now we're looking ahead to 21, 22, and 22, 23, and part of that work was kind of trying to get back on track, because once you lose students involved in activities, now you're having to redo the work that was probably done in years prior. But I do think we're at the point now where we can start looking back at 21, 22, 22, 23, and then hopefully next year, really start to see these trends and know whether or not we're kind of getting back on track to where we were and see numbers going up. The one, uh, race group that did not see an impact negatively and in fact saw an increase is our white students, so there is an overrepresentation of our white student community in our activities, and this is activities as a whole here. We did also add multiracial students as a category, uh, a few years ago, so there is, that data is a little irregular in the moment, and that kind of changes some of those racial groups to, when we're pulling students out of them and adding yet another group that we're looking at.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I just want to note the growth with our American Indian participation, and I want to make a parallel to the American Indian Native American Presentation Program report that was given at the last board meeting, and just want to thank Delon and Gabriella and Savannah for your, their leadership for that growth.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And those numbers will be a little more, they'll look a little more volatile when they go up and down, just because we have such a small student population, that if we have a few who are involved and who aren't involved, you'll see a big shift there, too. Um, so here, we are looking at activities by student groups, so we have our multilingual learners, our students with educational benefits, and our students with IEPs. We are hoping to break this multilingual learner data down a little bit more and understand that there was a huge drop, not only during COVID, but prior to COVID, and so, we've seen that dip back up again, but certainly not to the number that we had before, and so we do want to dig a little bit more into that and see if there was something that happened five years ago, that then those numbers dropped, and see if we can address what that is, but we haven't been able to pinpoint that piece quite yet. So, moving on to secondary activities, so this is the breakdown of the number of students who are in each category. So, we have our athletics, which 56% are involved in athletics, 11% in clubs, 27% in fine arts, and 11% in academics. So, what that would look like is athletics are your sports teams, um, mostly your MSHSL programs that we have. Clubs are student-led clubs, so that can be anything at any given time. They come to me and they say, "We want to start a club," and I say, "If you have 10 students or more, and an adult who will take you on, absolutely." So, those clubs are anything from the hack club, where they're, they're on computers, um, it's, uh, some of our affinity groups, it's kids who just want to get together and do parkour in the gymnastics center. Um, and then fine arts is going to include some of our MSHSL music programs, um, visual arts programs, and then the academic piece is going to be like your speech, debate, and those type of activities. So, moving on, breaking these down now by, uh, the different categories, so we're starting with academics here, and so the, uh, the pie chart on the right side is the district, so that is the percentage of students that are represented by race in those categories, and this will be a constant for the next few slides. On the left side, you will see the students who are participating. So, as you'll see here with our academic activities, we have an overrepresentation of our white students, and then you'll see, um, a pretty significant drop in most of the other categories, black, Hispanic, American Indian, Native American, and multiracial, um, and not as significant of a drop with our Asian population, but certainly the only overrepresentation is with our white students. Here, we have the same thing, and this is athletics or sport-specific. Here, you'll see, again, a very large over-representation, even larger than the previous slide, with our white student population, um, and then approximately the same percentage of students who are associating as black, Asian, American Indian, Native American, and multiracial. Hispanic has an even higher drop in percentage here of our students who are involved in Our clubs, so, um, these numbers are slightly different. Again, this is where affinity groups come into play, so we have, um, like if you'll see here, this is where our Asian population is over-represent, overrepresented in a fantastic way. They have Karun Club, um, which has a large number of students. Again, it's a club, but they are running stuff all the time, and they run all year long, um, and I think it, it's a huge testament to feeling seen and feeling like something is for you. That's where I'm seeing these club numbers increase for our diverse student population, our BIPOC students. And then we have the fine arts, um, again, over-representation with our white students, um, and then very similar percentages to the... And then very similar percentages to the others, where we have that lack of students in our black, Hispanic, Asian, American Indian, Native American, and multiracial groups. But in this one, our multiracial student group is actually a percent higher. So that's great, but I'm, and I'm not quite sure with that piece what is driving that. That could be an affinity group that maybe multiracial students are associating themselves with. Black Student Union is one that I'm thinking of, that students could be, you know, associating themselves as black and being part of this club, but then also falling in a category of multiracial as opposed to black in this chart.
We'll continue on with our special education program information. So this slide, initial referrals are students who have met initial criteria to be evaluated for special education. Students may or may not qualify for special education based on these evaluations, and they may or may not be evaluated based on a referral, but based on the initial referral. We may continue with interventions. So the following data is monitored to determine over and underrepresentation of student So this graph provides information about students who were referred to special education. So the students, again, may have qualified for special education services or may not have met criteria for special education. And we look at this data by race to measure whether we have disparities in our data. We do see an increase in our Hispanic students who were referred last year. All other groups either stayed the same or decreased a bit. We do have an overrepresentation for our students who identify themselves as multiracial. So the following data you're about to see will represent students who are currently receiving special education services. It differs from the previous slide as the students represented in this data are students who have been referred, qualified for, and are currently receiving services. So this graph represents students that are receiving services during the 22, 23 school year, broken down by race. We continue to see a more representative proportions of students serviced in special education by race. However, some of our groups continue to be outside of our proportionate range. We continue to have overrepresentation of our American Indian, Native American students serviced in special education, as well as our students who identify as multiracial. And then this slide is data represented by the trend groups of students. We just see just a slight overrepresentation for our students who are multilingual learners and who receive educational benefits.
All right, and that's the end of our presentation, so we'll open up for questions
He just confirmed that one student, that they do multiple things, it's counted once. Like, if they play a sport, is it the?
Nope.
Or does that count each time?
No, so they count, so if I am playing soccer and I'm in a club, I will be represented.
In each one?
Yep.
So our students we recognize are represented 25 times.
They are represented 25% of everything we do, was just saying.
What percent of students participate in some club or activity or any of the categories? Do we have any students who are, how many students, I guess, do we have that are not in any of them?
Good question.
That's a fantastic question. That would be pretty easy data to pull, but I don't have that right now, but I can certainly get that information to you pretty very quickly, yeah.
Well, and just maybe along with that, just, I would love to, you know, maybe comparable districts, or just like, you know, we have very active students, you know, in this, in this district, just how, how do we compare with percentages of who's involved in what, maybe, just, that's something to pull as well.
Yeah, again, that would be pretty easy, especially within our conference, I'd be able to pull that data, which some of those schools are like schools, and some not so much when it comes to our diversity. So we might not see a lot of the same numbers, but it would still be great information to have, so I can.
So, thank you for this, this was great. And I always have this question, like, so what, right? So now that we got all this data, I was thinking about some of those trends that either going up or going down. What, what are some things that you would like to do with this data in terms of, you know, to understand better, in terms of improvement, in terms of understanding the student body better? Just kind of love to hear more about that. I'm thinking of street data, right? Kind of like why some things are the way it is. Right away, I was thinking about, why, why is that, why is it this way, right? Why did it increase, why did it decrease? So we'd love to hear more.
I think all of it brings up more questions for all of us, and it's just good, it's, it's data that we use to monitor and also to, like, look at how are we doing compared to the strategic plan, right? And they also help to, for us to see those strategic plan areas, to know, like, here are the things that we need to develop. So a lot of our strategic plan is based on a lot of these reports and data that you see coming forward. I think, like, Trina and Andrea and Nisita, who are involved in the actual, you know, discussions with students, they, they get to hear that more often from the students directly, to hear about those programs and hear about, from those families as well, too, so they do, are able to get some of that street data and hear from, hear from families about that as well, too.
Especially when I think about, like, why overrepresentation in athletics versus academics or clubs, right? What, what are some of the underlying cultural perspectives about that?
Yes.
Or, right, I mean, there's some of it that is not the number, right? It's about the mindset, it's about how families think about that, how the students think about that.
Yeah. I, I think our boys volleyball program is going to be a really interesting one to watch, because right now, it's set up as a club sport, incredibly affordable. There isn't really this, like, high-level club volleyball outside that usually drives tons of money and, like, high-level full commitment. Now that the MSHSL starting next year is going to have it as a sport, it'd be really interesting, because it's one of our most diverse programs right now. Will that stay that way? We can actually track, if you stepped away, why did you step away? Was it financial, was it access, was it, it suddenly became this thing that it wasn't anymore? So I think, I think that'll be a really interesting one that I'll have my eyes on. I'm a little nervous that it will take away access to some of our more diverse families.
I mean, I, I'll just share, I was working with another district, and I remember hearing, and I was working with some students. Unfortunately, it was because of some incident that happened. And I remember some of the students, I think it was Asian students, they talk about how they feel this sense of, like, the club culture in athletics, right? So they don't want to be part of it. Or if they are, they often feel like they don't belong. They feel like they are a little bit, like, people are like, "Why are you there, right? Why, you know, you should be the one in the math club." But I like, I like sports. So there's some of that going on, that would be interesting to see what is, what are those mindsets are, and what, what are people thinking and feeling about, about how, how, how being in a sports club mean, right? Or not mean, or, you know, they are just not interested, because they didn't grow up that, at doing that. So it's, it was very interesting. I always remember that, that conversation with the students, because it was, I don't know if we would have been able to find that data anywhere else, except for the fact that I was with them, right? We got street, we were talking about it.
Yes.
And they're like, "Oh, yeah, we don't feel like people want us there." I'm like, "Oh, wow."
And I think, really, the work that I do is very different than these two, because we aren't able to raise these kids in sport and club culture necessarily in school the same way. Now, this is data that usually these students are coming up in our school system. I receive a lot of these students from this, like, high-level intense sport culture that's created through, like, rec and for-profit programming, and then they end up at the high school, and it has become this, like, elite, we are the ones. You can't just join right now and try to become a basketball player, that's not going to happen if you've never dribbled a ball before. So that, that's, I think, the unique piece to activities, because I just don't have my hands on those kids. You know, we can't, we can't really control all of that stuff until they get here, and then we try to break that down and provide as much access and comfort and belonging, feeling of belonging as we can, but it is, it is a lot of work to do. Yeah.
Can I ask a follow-up on what you were talking about? You talked about the financial barriers may be a potential issue. What kind of resources can we offer families if, in fact, they fill out the educational benefits form? What kind of discount do they get? Could you comment on that?
Yep. So there's the free and the reduced. So the reduced, those students pay 50% of all clubs and activities that I operate, that my budget operates. Clubs run slightly differently, because they simply pay much lower fee, and that money essentially goes to pay for the person who's running the club, but we still will waive students, like, there's no money going in, but we make it work for the students who are free and reduced. And then the students who categorizes as free, they don't pay to register. However, that doesn't pay for all the equipment and, you know, all of the extras that come along with it, all of that fundraising stuff that maybe kids don't have support with, you know, they're not in a household of parents saying, "Let's go knock on the doors together," right? So the school itself is able to provide the registration fee, but it's the stuff beyond that that really is kind of beyond what we provide, that kind of sets them up, like, "I can't afford those cleats." Hopefully, you know, there's a lot of reaching out to grants and scholarships and stuff like that, so we do the best we can. There's just, there's not a lot you can do when the team is saying, "Let's go train at this particular facility in the offseason." It costs money, and, and that's not something that my programming can offer financial help with. Thank you.
I was making the connection to our community advisory work around who is in the community that, if they were to know about this, right, that there are gaps in financial support, how might our community step up if they knew about it?
I was, I was just going to say, now, I wanted to do a shout-out to the, the school districts, and we've got a lot of, a plethora of booster clubs that really, I think, help out. And I know you're probably working with a lot of them through sports and through other activities, but we do have some great, you know, booster clubs in this district to help out, groups where maybe where we're falling, or some families or kids are falling short.
And a huge shout-out, actually, to Dick's Sporting Goods. They gave about, I want to say it's like 30 pairs of cleats that they, they were the ones that you put on the shelf, and then they can't resell, and so they reached out and said, "Would you take these?" So it was football cleats and baseball cleats, and so, you know, there are some community partnerships like that that happen, but then, you know, it's random size 11, you know, who knows if it'll work for the student who needs it, but there are some opportunities like that as well.
So just thinking, like, almost in accounting, right? Like, if you are in this particular sport, it adds up, right? Some of the things adds up.
Yes.
And if that cost is upfront in our community support know that, right? People in the community know that, like, give and say, "This much donation, support activities for a kid over a year," right? You know, I'm just thinking, yeah, out loud here, yeah.
And that's something I think I, again, could easily put together and put on our website, and, you know, I've been fundraising for this weight room equipment for what feels like 400 years. I think we've got it, we're all set, hopefully we'll have that new equipment this summer, but then the money that is still coming in for that, I'm hoping to put into scholarships for summer training, because that is something that my budget can't cover for the free and reduced students. So anyone who was free and reduced the year prior, we can use that as scholarship for them. But I think we can expand on that as we're talking here and really give people the, if they can see basketball, it's $100 for shoes, hockey, it's $2,000 for all the gear, right? So that people can see.
Upfront, right? I really see that and say, "Okay, I just don't think I can have my kid do this."
Yep.
What can we do to support a family who really, a kid who really wants to try?
Absolutely.
Because we don't want this to be buried, it's really opportunities, right? Go beyond academics, yes. It's all in your head, I know.
No, no, it's, it's great for conversation with you, and it shouldn't just stay in my head, it, it should know.
No, but it, it brings up a great point of, you know, for larger, maybe larger asks or where you need help, we have a very also active and robust Rosemary Scholes Foundation who could help with the capital, maybe a campaign or just some, you know, but it's, you know, using that group, just it resides booster clubs, but there's ways to help fill in the gap when we look at that group.
Absolutely.
Ideas churning.
And Nisita, I was wondering if you could comment on the work you, you're doing to try to bring the various groups closer to 1.0 and success, for example, that you've been having in Hispanic group, et cetera. How, how is that being achieved? What are your plans into the future?
Mm-hmm. So our plans are working with our MNN, what is it, multi-tiered systems of support that we're trying to put into place to make sure that every site has an effective and working site team, I mean, SAT team, which is Student Assistance Team, I have to stop without the acronyms. And so if, if we're, if we're strengthening our tier one, where everyone's getting what they're supposed to be getting at that tier one, we're hoping to see that our other tiers are shrinking. And then when I say our other tiers, especially that top tier, which is special education, and the referrals that are going out, that are going out to SAT team to request evaluations for students. So if they're getting what they need in, on the front end, they won't need as much on the back end. And so we're, we've been, you know, with, we're fortunate enough to have a coordinator that's been working closely with our schools to talk about what SAT looks like at, at each site, and we're hoping that in the coming, you know, it may take us a couple of years, but we have cohesive SAT teams at each site.
And what would you say has contributed to getting some of the increase in Hispanic students in terms of referrals?
I mean, I think it's awareness of those, that, you know, I, I encourage my team as well as myself when we're going out to sites to, to present the data and making teams aware of their data, and we break it down by race and just really talk through what, what it says when we see these numbers for referrals at each site. And so that's just a start, and a lot of it, I mean, we, we give kudos to our teams for putting the work in to put the interventions in place, because I believe that if the interventions work, then we, we don't need to go any further than that. And so they're, we're giving all, just accolades to our teams to, that they're putting those interventions in place for our students.
Thank you.
I have a question about the special ed trends by race ethnicity. I, I'm just curious, the red line, which is kind of getting, I think that's the Asian student, right? Is that correct?
Oh, my God, I can't read.
All right.
Those are the Asian students? That was 0.6 and is getting closer to, to proportionality of 0.8? Do you have comments about why that happened? Is it outreach, is it, you know, again, kind of a change in understanding what services are?
I think it's a change in understanding of what services are. Looking, you know, just looking at services differently. Like I said, it's an awareness piece, and there are, you know, our students are, you know, at one point, looking at, just because, when we look at our students, of Asian students, they also may fall into that multilingual piece and looking at how we service those students and when we start servicing the students. So it's just an awareness piece.
Because I also know in many Asian cultures, there's a stigma around, I mean, actually, many, right? What, what special ed?
Right.
What, what it means to be in special.
In special education, yes.
Overcoming that and know that these are services that you will.
Taking away the negative, and I always take, you know, I always tell people, you know, and like, we take away that negative aspect of what special education is and look at it in terms of, there may be a point in a child's educational career where they need a little extra help. And it's not, you know, I'm, I myself, a parent of a child with an IEP, and I had to overcome that, too, as, even as a spec director, to, to really see that, the extra boost and help that, that it's making him more successful.
Because that was kind of pretty, I could, you know, that was very nice progress over the last few years. Thank you for the work. It's great.
All right. Do we have any data, like, what, you know, coming, coming from a higher ed perspective, that students who participate in activities, clubs, organizations do better? Do they graduate at higher rates? Can we tell if there's, is there anything that tells that that's the way we can? push some of our students to do better on certain groups?
I would say that part of, I mean, a lot of these groups have that accountability piece attached to them. So it's been incredibly helpful with some of our students who aren't as present in the classroom to get them into the classroom. I think it's both a motivator and then naturally with some of those activities, you know, they're, they are education based, a lot of them are music based, you know? And so naturally, some of those students who do well in those areas will gravitate toward those activities as well. So we certainly use like our sports specifically, we can use as a driver. It's much easier to track attendance and know that we have games tonight. We have, you know, a lot of coaches and eyes on those students, whereas our clubs are a little more loosely run. So attendance isn't necessarily the driver for them. And we all know that attendance is really the biggest driver for our students being successful in the classroom. So yes, I have a lot of students right now in this winter session. It's been a little tough. So I have a lot of coaches who students actually have to show them their phone and their attendance and their grades every day to step onto the court, step onto the ice. So not only do our students tend to do well, they're, you know, pushed by family members too, like this is one of those things that we're going to be doing, including doing well in the classroom, you're also going to be doing this. So we, again, I think that's pretty easy data to pull, to see who, which stu, because we, if we were pulling the students who weren't there, we can simply pull credit checks on those students as well and then GPAs on those students too.
Yeah, I had the same question, right? How does this correlate to, and maybe it's not directly to GPA, but there's sense that they belong, right? And so they tend to want to come to school more because there's a club they're gonna go to. So I, so some of this may not be the actual quantitative data. It might be just the sense that they, they want to come, right? So I think, I think having that correlation or some sense of what that is, it would be very interesting to see, to understand, yeah.
I'd suggest that you're asking the same question, right? So what students are we missing? What interventions can we put in place? How can we ensure that sense of belonging and inclusion to elevate the performance of all students?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Interesting.
All right. The monthly financial report, we have Business Director Sheri Thompson.
Good evening. So I have a couple of items that I'd like to touch on. In your packet, you will see there's an enrollment summary. We have completed our preliminary enrollment projection, so I will touch on that. First, I want to draw your attention to an item in the consent agenda. That is the approval for the facility assessment. And I'm, you know, I'm sure you read those, through those materials, but we haven't really looked at our deferred maintenance in our facilities since we did our big study pre-bond referendum in like 2016. So we have now completed deferred maintenance at Little Canada. We've done a large portion at the high school, but there's still more work to be done. We have completed work at Brimhall. This summer, we will be completing Falcon Heights. This is year two of Falcon Heights. And then beginning this summer, we'll do phase one of EDW and phase two, the completion will happen in 2025. So Carl Sanderson has been our project manager. We've been partnering with them since passage of the referendum. And we have talked to them about completing, you know, a third party, a deep dive, so we can figure out what that next phase is. Of course, you have a 10-year plan and you adopt it every year, but things change over the years. We know we have some large roofing projects to do, so we're just looking for them to complete this study. We also will have access to a database that we can use. This is going to help with the LTFM plan every year and give us more information as you approve that, as we come to you every year. And they're looking at probably a four to five month completion on this. And that kind of aligns with about the time that we come to you to approve the LTFM plan. So they will complete the study, they'll go through it with administration and they will come to the board and present their findings to you. So I just wanted to kind of recap that because that's, at least in our world and operations, we're pretty excited about that. I think it will be a great tool for us moving forward. Secondly, then, the, as I stated, we had completed the enrollment projection for next year. We've talked about how enrollment has either been stagnant or slightly declining in the last couple of years. We're still trying to figure out that trend. Currently, you have something in front of you that lays out our enrollment projections by grade and by school. So we are projecting for the elementary, for instance, and that's highlighted there in that purple, 3,820 students, K through, K through six. That is comparable to where we, on February 1st, we're at 3,798. That's to the far right there. And that compares to the staffing that we had done a year ago for the 23, 24 school year, 3,887. So we, while we think, you know, we're down a little bit as far as where we projected even a year ago, we're projecting that will be slightly up from February 1st. And we will continue to monitor this. Couple of the trends that we're seeing overall, I think this year, Edgerton's enrollment has been down this year. And then also Falcon Heights had a large class moving through. They had a bubble moving through, the sixth grade. So that, that bubble moves out. So that's impacting their enrollment overall. And then looking at the secondary, we have seen an increase in the secondary at our middle school level. You can see there overall, looking at the secondary, we're at three, we're projecting 3,409 students. We had actually staffed for 3,368 students. We've seen most of that growth at the middle school this year, which is great. And February 1st, we are at 3,410. So we're looking at pretty flat numbers there. So yeah, so overall, we're estimating that we'll be 26 lower than our projection, projection from a year ago, but we will be in, see a net increase of about 21 students from February 1st to next year. And obviously, we continue to monitor this. And if we see any large changes or vary, we will update the board on that. But yes, we see a lot of up and down between now and October, right?
Yeah.
So primarily, yes.
How is the kindergarten class doing?
So the kindergarten class this year, we saw a kindergarten, we have a kindergarten class of about 520. So this is the lowest kindergarten class that we've had in, I would say, over 10 years. We are hoping that those numbers will be up slightly next year for five, at 544, just from what we're seeing in our pre-K. But yes, that is something that we're watching. We do know, you know, that birth rates have been down overall. And recognizing some of the impact that charter schools are also having. Charter schools, homeschooling, non-public, but we also will see how, just, you know, looking at our experience, how that impacts other schools, even with the change in federal funding. Right? Because we have all received federal funding the last four years. So we'll see how that impacts enrollment for all of us going forward.
And one of the things that, so if I'm reading this right, so we are, we're looking at initial increase at Harambe, projections right now. So that's, that's good news.
We've actually seen enrollment from the beginning of the year. The last couple of months, we've seen enrollment ticking up at Harambe.
That's good.
We'd like to see it higher, but it's headed in the right, it's headed in the right direction.
Too bad. I'd love to tell them about the year round school.
Yes. And Central Enrollment has been really good about informing families of the year round opportunity.
Yes, they have.
Any other questions on enrollment? Okay, the last item I have, last but not least, is the 2023 audit. So we are still finalizing the statements. It's been slower than we had thought. Part of it has been even getting information, final information to the auditors on my part, the department, our department, our finance department. Everyone is hard at it. Some of it's just even been my own schedule. And now aligning the schedule with the auditors, as we get things done, then them have frame up time. So right now, we have worked out of schedule and they should be, they are working this week on producing a final draft. That does not mean review to, so a final draft. I will, I am working with them on that as well. Our goal is, and part of this is complicated with my schedule, I will be out from February 29th through March 14th. I will be doing some work remote if needed to get the audit done. Our goal is to have the draft audit out to the board electronically by March 8th. And, and then at that time, it will go through their review process and bring it to the board for review and final adoption on March 19th. And I know this is delayed and we don't want it delayed. And I know that, and I take responsibility on, on those delays, just trying to get, keep everything, keep everything moving. We are also looking at adding a staffing position in the business office, which I think will help going forward. And again, and I know you've heard this before and it's really not intended to be an excuse, but the amount of reporting that we have continued to have to do with not only federal funds, we've been fortunate enough to also secure grants from the state and federal level, which is fabulous, but it's creating, it's putting a lot more burden on the business office as well as far as reporting and even working with teams and getting their grants compiled and making sure they're in compliance. So I apologize for that. And knowing when I look at that strategic plan and number five, not only being financially secure, part of that is reporting on time as far as being fiscally solvent and strong. So...
Well, I want to emphasize too, it's a shared responsibility, certainly. And as I've gotten closer to this process to fully understand, right? It's unique because many of us in all of our jobs, we can work collaboratively together every single step of the way. In fact, I think most work happens that way. For the audit, when we have an internal Roseville Area Schools Business Department, you do a chunk of the work, then it's scheduled out with the auditing firm and we can't move forward until we get their work back. Then we do a chunk of the work.
And they wait for us.
And so I've just learned so much over the time that it is so belabored and you're waiting on each other constantly. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
It's a shared responsibility.
I have a question. So totally get that, oh my goodness. And it's not, it's not like we have a grants office, right? Where we only deal with all the grants, you know, reporting.
Cabinet has suggested that.
Well...
Are you applying?
I do wonder though, with, if we are going to be working with more grants, is that something that we need to think about even seasonally, right? Getting folks who could manage that or help us in your office? So it's not a position, but it's like knowing that we have more bigger grants that are going to come, come in, to think about that. Just a thought.
And that could be a part of your vision for the new position now that you parcel it out a little bit right now with grants.
That is part of, part of the vision for that new position.
And then another question is with the, what they have named the fiscal cliff, right? Because the four-year pandemic funding will not be there anymore. Would that help a little bit with the next audit?
After this next audit, we'll have one more year of federal funding and we laugh in the business office because it's like, okay, now that we have this figured out, because that piece went a lot better, now that we have this figured out, the money's going away. But yes, but again, we can, we continue, there's still a lot more reporting even at the state level than there was previously.
Thank you, Sheri. Thank you and your, and your team in that office. It's like...
Very fortunate to have the team that I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep our guests waiting.
Yeah. Moving on to action items, we are pleased to have members of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee here, along with Director Delon Smith. We'll be discussing our Education Transmittal Resolution committee roster. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, guys. I really appreciate you being here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. Just want to make sure you grab a mic and speak into. All right. So greeting School Board members and for those who are watching online, I'm Delon Smith, Director of Equity and Innovation, here in the Office of Educational Equity. I'm pleased to be here with members of our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee and I just want to take some time for them to introduce.
I'm Ursula Pankinen, as Delon said, one of the parents on the committee, a descendant of the Leach Lake Band of Ojibwe.
Buju, abitabi, kijinki, ikuwai, indigenous cause, malaks, ndum jaba, amagizi, ndum dem. My English name is Kelly Miller. I am an enrolled member of the Malaks Band of Ojibwe. I am an AIPAC member and my children attend Central Park Elementary School. Thank you for having us.
Yourself?
I'm Gabriella Carroll and I am the American Indian Education Program Coordinator.
Welcome back.
You're famous.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, or AIPAC, serves in an advisory role to the district and helps to ensure that American Indian students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities. The AIPAC is critical to the achievement and success of American Indian students in Roseville and their presence, input and knowledge is key to strengthening district and parent partnerships. Prior to March 1st of each year, the AIPAC must meet to discuss whether or not they concur with the educational offerings that have been extended by the district to American Indian students. If the AIPAC finds that the district and/or school board have been meeting the needs of American Indian students, they issue a vote and resolution of concurrence. If they find that the district or the school board have not been meeting the needs of American Indian students, they issue a vote and resolution of non-concurrence. So this is what we're here to talk about today. So I'll turn it over to Gabriella Carroll, our Native American Program Coordinator, and she'll share a little bit more.
So Hamidak Yapi, hello my relatives. It's good to see you all so soon again. As Delon mentioned, I will explain a little bit more about the vote of annual compliance. Our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, or AIPAC, met during their monthly meeting in January to assess if Roseville Area Schools is currently meeting the needs of our Native American students. This year, MDE provided an American Indian Education Aid Program Plan Review document to assist the AIPAC in determining if Roseville Area Schools made sufficient progress towards each of our goals submitted to MDE in fall of 2023. Once the vote is taken, it is reflected formally on documentation provided by the Office of American Indian Education. The vote and resolution must be presented by the school board by one or more members of our AIPAC. If the vote is one of non-concurrence, the AIPAC must also provide written recommendation for improvement to the school board at the time of presentation. The school board does not approve the resolution, they receive the information and it is reflected within the board minutes. In the case of non-concurrence, the school board is then given 60 days in which to respond in writing to the AIPAC recommendation. The board response must be signed by the school board and be provided to the AIPAC and submitted to the Office of American Indian Education, MDE. I'll now turn it over to Ursula, our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Chair, to share this year's vote of annual compliance. share this year's vote of annual compliance.
Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So our parent committee has recommendations for the school board and I wanted to go over what our recommendations are and then explain why we're making those recommendations. So our first recommendation, increase professional development for all staff. Every year, the American Parent Indian Parent Advisory Committee, or AIPAC, works with district leadership in the Office of Educational Equity to create goals and strategies to support the needs of Native American students in our district. We collaborate on educational goals that allow the district to apply for the American Indian Educational Aid Grant, or AIEA, a grant that supports a large portion of American Indian ed programming. The goals for the AIEA grant focus on five areas. Post-secondary preparation for Native American students, Native American academic achievement, culturally relevant curriculum, positive reinforcement of Native American self-image, and intercultural awareness for students, families and staff. The grant provides funding to support Native American educational programming and the goals are meant to be for the district, not just for the American Indian staff. During the last few years, the district has met one of the five goals. It is the goal area that focuses on positive self-image. This is the goal where our American Indian ed staff has the most impact. The other goal areas require multiple staff across multiple buildings to collaborate in order to reach those goals. To improve the outcomes for our children and make greater strides toward meeting our district's AIEA goals, we make the following recommendations. First, we think that increased professional development for all staff around American Indian education can help move the district in the right direction. We think that improved professional development around supporting American Indian students and having a better understanding of American Indian ed programming goals will help our staff members see their role in helping the district achieve the goals and helping our students succeed. Do our staff members understand their role in achieving the AIEA grant each year? Do our staff members know the purpose for those goals? Without professional development, our staff may not understand the importance of the goals and the strategies for our children and the students in this district. Our second request is for adequate staffing for American Indian ed programming. A major concern of AIPAC during the last several years has been about staff retention. For years, it was the responsibility of a single liaison to support all American Indian students and families across 11 buildings, all while building up an American Indian ed program and supporting district staff as they work with our students and families. In the 2020 school year, there were several months where there was no American Indian education programming or staff. That winter, the district supported hiring a coordinator to help build the program and a part-time liaison. And in this model, more consistent programming began to occur for our children. And if I remember correctly, that following year was the first year that my daughter received any services for Native American students and she was a third grader in our district that year. All three of my kids participated and programming has been great for our children. My children love attending their affinity groups. Last year, we saw a need for increased staffing as the 1.5 FTE model wasn't enough. And during the third trimester of last year, a part-time liaison position was supported by the district. As a committee, we noticed and appreciated that increased support. Because American Indian ed programming supports students, families and staff across 11 buildings, staffing is still a concern for AIPAC. We believe that one coordinator and one liaison is not sufficient staffing for an American Indian ed program that spans 11 buildings. In order for our students and families to make connections with our American Indian ed staff, they need to be able to see them more frequently. We are concerned that the job will spread our staff members too thin and we will again have problems with retention. Right now, I believe we are down to one staff member. The American India ed programming coordinator, Gabriella. Our liaison is currently out on maternity leave and our parent committee was disappointed to learn that a sub was not posted for her. Our students and families still need support and roles should not go unfilled during maternity leave or any other kind of leave. Finally, we have seen improvement in cooperation within the district around American Indian ed programming. Past staff members reported having difficulty getting access to school, students or classroom spaces to work with our kids. Fortunately, that has improved and staff members have a much easier time meeting with our students and being welcomed at the 11 schools. And those are great gains and there is still room for growth, particularly when building staff are responsible for connecting with American Indian ed staff to support students. It is our understanding that the district wants our liaisons to be invited to work with and support families during more challenging educational situations like IEP meetings and student disciplinary meetings. Our liaisons are not getting consistent invitations to those sorts of meetings. We would like for our families to walk into those meetings with an advocate, one that they know and their children know. In order to make this happen, we must have adequate staffing and make sure building staff reach out to connect with our liaisons with enough time to get the meetings on their calendars. So our recommendations, increase professional development for all staff, adequate staff for American Indian education. We are asking for an additional 1.0 FTE for staffing and then concrete plans for coverage when somebody is out. We are also asking for increased support for American Indian ed staff and programs, particularly through improved collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you.
The American Parent Advisory Committee issues a vote and resolution of concurrence with the educational offerings that have been extended by Roseville area schools to the indigenous students. We think that the district is making movement in the right direction. We would like to see continued efforts in supporting the American Indian educational aid rules and increased collaboration with American Indian ed programming. District 623 is ahead of the game with some of the new state mandates regarding American Indian education. The dress code changes, smudging practices and hiring a coordinator were implemented in collaboration with AIPAC. The last few years, we have also made requests around indigenous language courses, which is one of the new state mandates. It is our strong belief that improving professional development about Native Americans, increasing staff to support programming and improving collaboration across the district departments to support American Indian ed will have a strong positive outcome for our children and for our district.
Thank you.
So we'll open up for any questions or formal process? You can ask questions now, you know, before we vote. Members are okay with that or?
We just accept.
Yeah, just accept, that's right. Go ahead.
Okay. No, 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 no questions, just a comment. First of all, thank you for your patience tonight and your patience in general is, you know, as we as the district try to ramp up this program. I personally, I am very excited about the things that have happened so far. I'm excited about where it's going. Just really, you know, just really excited. Gabriella, you're amazing and in case someone hasn't told you that lately, this is, the program has grown so much in just the last three years. You know, we will continue to work with AIPAC to make it better.
Can I make a follow-up comment? I agree. I think Gabriella is amazing. I purposely bought a house within this school district just for this school district. So just, and I am a first time home buyer two years ago and I chose this, I chose Roseville.
You chose Roseville.
Yes, knowing, but also knowing that their American Indian programming was very minimal and that is a hard pill to swallow because where I work, our district, my job and programs I oversee work really closely with St. Paul and know of how well their programmings are. But reiterating how great she is and how wonderful her and Savannah make the programming for our students, for my children, for other American Indian students, they enjoy going to these programmings. And I just want to reiterate that not having a sub is going to have, is going to give missed opportunities for our students to connect with people and building those trusting relationships, learning about their culture, learning their language and just connecting with like-minded students that look like them because representation is huge for students, especially students of color. And when there is no other American Indian student in the room, it, it can, it can feel lonely. So being able to connect with those other students even for that half hour once or twice a month is really important, I know, to my children and me as a parent. So not having a sub was, is really disappointing and I'm not sure the process it takes, but I would love if we could figure out how that could be an option so our students are not missing programming the rest of the school year because it's only the end of, middle of February.
Sure. And I, first of all, I hear you. I understand and I completely with you, okay? I, I, I'm not going to do the thing where I normally do and try to say something that I can't do, but you've been heard and I'm, we're going to work with Director Smith and others to see what can be done, so.
Thank you.
We were, I know that we were all impressed, especially with Gabriella and Savannah, the participation report. Yeah, it has talked about more participation and improvements over the past few years, but the passion you bring and Savannah was bringing and just it's, it was just so key. It was wonderful to see that report, but thank you. Thank you for being here and, and giving us things to work on. I mean, we, you know, as Director Johnson said, we will very much keep working on things, make things better, but we, this is such a great group and thank you for being here tonight and this, you know, this report, so thank you.
Your feedback is received.
Yeah, yep.
I really thank you for the work and really this relationship is very important for us in this district. So the work that you all put in, in the, in the committee to look at what is going on and giving us a very constructive feedback is really appreciate this kind of like the vote that you did this year really speaks to, we are, we are really working on it and we have still work to do, right? But we are definitely working on it and thanks to Gabriella and Savannah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just quickly add?
Yeah.
But I, I, I just want to at least try to ensure that the board knows that just how committed of a group we have for our AIPAC. You know, when Gabriella and I first started, I think we had one or two people, Ursula was one of them. And Ursula, I want to thank you because you've hung in there to be the chair of this committee and I know it's tough doing that and we tried to find others to pick up the mantle. But you've hung in there, so thank you for that. Kelly, you as well, you're always there. But our AIPAC is growing, so that's really exciting.
That's great.
To see we have consistent membership this year has been really, really great at our AIPAC meetings. I think we've got some good things done in those meetings and so this is just a really powerful group and, and I appreciate their advocacy for our students and I, I'm totally with y'all in trying to make everything happen that needs to happen for our students. But just want to make sure that we understand the importance of our relationship with our, with our AIPAC and just to thank at least these two and those who may be watching for your, for your commitment. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Smith.
Thank you for that, yeah.
Thank you.
And I'll just throw in there, I'll extend an invite if you guys ever want to attend an AIPAC meeting. We have food, we have great company, there's childcare, you can feel free to bring your kids. I think it's definitely important for you as well as board members to know parents and students. I know Curtis, you, or Director Johnson, you've given to a few of them.
You can call me Curtis.
And I know we'll get the invitation to the celebration at the end of the year as well. We used to have a board member come consistently and I appreciated that because sometimes there were questions that we had and like they either knew the answer or could get it to us.
Also.
If somebody can let us know when the meetings are.
Yeah, that would be great.
Do we have a current representative?
It has.
I think it has been.
Do we have a backup for you?
Actually, you're going to have to look.
We will check in.
Yeah, that I don't know actually. Thank you for your patience again for.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do we need to do something? Oh, so do we need it? It is.
I still need to accept. Accept the concurrence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Throw me off, okay. All right, we are at that point where we, I'll entertain a motion to exempt, to accept the American Indian Transmittal Resolution. The committee roster is present. So moved. Okay, is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you.
That's great.
All right, moving on to the study session report, Director Kitty Goggins, thank you.
Well, we, we're scheduled, our last meeting to have both a closed session and a study session. The closed session was put first and it was a robust discussion around the negotiations and where those were at. And that discussion extended so long, it was a decision to make, to delay the study session till a future date when we could do the topic justice. So the study session did not occur.
If I may add, so anti-racist leadership extended will happen after the March 6th meeting, at the March 6th study session.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Goggins. Okay, moving on to board reports. I think I will, is it okay, Rose?
Oh.
Start with you, is that all right?
Sure. I think the, the meeting that I went to that I will report and I think Manix, you were there, I don't remember who else, is the Ramsey County League of Local Government. There was monthly meeting on climate action in Ramsey County. It was actually well-attended, the presentations were wonderful, I learned so much about what is happening in Ramsey County. So we had somebody from Ramsey County, Abby Phillips, really, she, she shared a little bit of a report that will be coming out that provides a framework and description of what is happening in Ramsey County and how, you know, different entities can work together. And so she couldn't like give us that download yet, but it's going to come. And I thought she did a great job kind of talking about all the ways that different agency can work together and how they do that. And they did a lot of focus groups and a lot of community engagement to come up with this framework, so I was very appreciative of that. And then John Don, who is the Shoreview Council member and he's also the RCLG treasurer and he is part of leading within RCLG, a collective action effort around climate change. So there is a committee that he calls CLAW, Climate Action Work Group. And again, really, they are really trying to think about how to include all the different, so a lot of this is very, the inter-agency of how we can work together. And so this group is actually going to maybe try to get some funding to move forward. So along with the Ramsey County framework, along with some of the processes that need to get in place, I think it's going to be very exciting in terms of who will be involved in this. And then finally, Peter Lindstrom from the Met Council provided information around grants and timelines. There's actually a lot of funding available for climate change and he gave us a whole resource list. And so it's interesting to see how, he talked about how there are some organizations that would be more ready to, 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 to kind of apply for those grants and hopefully those will keep coming and hope that Minnesota will be on the radar to receive some of those federal funding to do some great work. The one that he highlighted was the EPA's Climate Pollution Reduction Grant. So he talked about that. And so it was, it was a really interesting session to listen to how all this is happening and I've been thinking about all the ways that we are working on that and at some point, how do we intersect, right? Intersect with the other government agencies to make sure that we are on the same page too. Yeah, so thank you. That was great. Manix, you want to add anything?
That's great. Thanks, Rose, Manix.
I would say we had the SEEK meeting, Special Education Advisory Council meeting, Director Goggins and I both attended that. Dr. Busman talked to the group about the science of reading and we had a couple of new members who had questions about SEEK and how they can become more involved, so I think that was very good. Also got to attend the Community Education Advisory Council as well and Chris Rossow shared with us about the Meals on Wheels program, so I learned a. shared with us about the Mills on Wheels program, so I've learned a lot about that, you know, that we provide that for senior adults and adults with disabilities, that this past year, we had over 27,500 mills that we did through that, her resistance based on our district there, and the mills are made from scratch here at Abbotetua Tetcha. So, it was a very informative thing, because I had not heard about that before. I know about Mills on Wheels, but not the detail about what we do at special, so I think that was good. And then I also got the pleasure to spend some time with Dr., with Sarah Kudarnas, at Little Canada Elementary. He gave me a nice tour, since I've been on the board, I had not had a chance to actually tour Little Canada Elementary there, and to borrow something from Superintendent Sonic, I went into a couple of classrooms with him, and to watch the kids come up and give him a hug, it really warms your heart. That was, I thought, I told you, I said, because it was very, I mean, he had such a great relationship with those kids, and introduced me to a lot of the staff there, and it was good to be there. It was very, it was bustling that day. Very good opportunity, but yeah, I know some of the other things other people did.
Thank you. Kitty?
Got a chance to attend with Todd, the AMSD Knowledge Work Session that was really around student-centered work, and they shared their analysis that really kind of covers three areas, the Culture of Innovation, Support of Teachers and Leaders, and Comprehensive Assessment System. And if we look at our platform, we certainly have a student-centered component in there that actually touches on two of those three areas. But it seems like they're a resource in trying to organize statewide effort to support the student-centered work, and we're also looking for partners in that activity. Todd and I did share our platform that we're working on and the element around student-centered work. Got to attend the LBGTQ Plus Council. We had representatives at Minnesota Department of Education's Gender-Inclusive Learning Cohort that they've been offering for the first time, and had some good material that came out, and it's really interesting how that group will, they'll take some challenge that some staff member or teacher is having, implementing the policies we have, and say, "Well, how could we do this? What kind of ideas do people have?", and have a really great discussion with some new ways of trying to do things, new approaches, as we're trying to become even more welcoming for our students. Along with almost all of our board members, I got to attend the community conversation around safety, and would like to thank John Choi, the Ramsey County Attorney, and the Roseville Police, and the community members who attended, as well as the board members. There's some great material collected, and I'm very excited to see that we'll continue the conversation with high school students on this incredibly important topic. Attended the local elected officials meeting, and where the district presented our platform and early childhood programming, and there was some great conversation and discussion, as well as talking about school safety. That's another opportunity, like Rose was talking about, with really collaboration as people share their updates and we realize some of the connections and opportunities there. That's it.
Okay. Well, there's, there's a reason I don't like to go after Kitty. But I do have two things. First, a shout-out to the Roseville Area High School Powerlifting Club. This is actually a fairly new group, but they have qualified for nationals, so they will be going, I believe that's going, they have supposedly 10 to 12 kids who will be going to New Orleans in a month or so, so congratulations and good luck to them. Just really impressive work, especially, because again, this is a very new group, something for the future. This Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the Mini Play Festival, Roseville Area High School, will feature five plays written and directed by students, and obviously performed by students. It's something I've always enjoyed, and it's, Friday and Saturday, you can see it from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, and then on Sunday, you have a matinee from 2:00 to 3:30. So, you know, if you can, make some time, go and see these, because they're, these are really good things, so that is all I have. Thank you. I just wanna briefly touch on that local government meeting. I appreciate Superintendent Lake that we are continuing this opportunity to network with all kinds of stakeholders, something that Superintendent Sekouli started, I thought it was a great idea quarterly to kind of keep those connections and the networking. So, thank you for keeping that going. Just a reminder for the public and my own board colleagues that our next board meeting, it will not be on Tuesday, March 5th, that's because there's a Minnesota Presidential Primary. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, March 6th. I'm sure we're all aware of that, but just a friendly reminder out there, Wednesday, March 6th. And then, just kind of also, you know, I don't know if the public knows this too much, but, you know, Association of Metropolitan School Districts has a day at the Capitol, and I just wanna remind folks that, you know, to the public out there, that, you know, you have school board members who are very active in this, in this organization, and several of us are going to be either that day, or Minnesota School Boards Association also has one coming up further in March, but the first one is Tuesday, March 5th, and it's our opportunity to meet with legislators, to talk about our school district legislative priorities, but we are very active with that group. We'll have some folks at the Capitol that day to hear from legislators and to have their ear, so it's something important. I think that the public does understand that we're, we're doing a lot, and we lobby on behalf of our, you know, our priorities, our legislative priorities around education, so, you know, it's a good, it's a good day to go up there and talk to the legislators. That's coming up. That's all I had. Superintendent Jenny Lake?
Thank you. Good evening. Throughout the month of February, we celebrate Black History Month. I'll emphasize that in Roseville area schools, it's our mission to raise the voices of our Black community and truly recognize and celebrate all BIPOC communities every day in our schools. February is also School Board Recognition Month. Collectively, the Roseville Area School Board continues to thrive in representing our entire school community through listening to students, staff, and community members, discussing important issues, and speaking with one voice. As Superintendent, I'm incredibly grateful to serve such a dedicated, invested, wise, and generous school board. One particular board member is deserving of special recognition this evening. Our very own Dr. Rose Chu has been recently named a 2023 Minip Ron McKinley All My Relations Equity in Action Award winner. I'm now going to read part of the awards press release. Congratulations. Thank you. Dr. Rose Chu has dedicated her professional life to the tireless pursuit of education, equity, and excellence. A first-generation immigrant from Hong Kong and first-generation college graduate, her original engineering background and experience at Honeywell, coupled with her most honored role as a classroom teacher at Plymouth Youth Center and Minneapolis Public Schools, have continued to ground her life's work in educational reform and transformation. I would read the whole entire press release, but I would go on and on. In closing, in addition, Rose is the visionary and project lead for the Elevate Teaching Movement to transform how we talk about, view, and relate to the teaching profession, to restore and honor, and to restore the honor and prestige the profession deserves in our society, starting with Minnesota. Rose has served as a school board director in Roseville area schools since January 2020, and also is a 2022 Bush Fellow. So, congratulations, Dr. Chu.
Thank you for calling that out. I don't usually like those things going on.
It's a perfect month.
Thank you, yeah. I have to say, it's, it's an honor that is very, very heartfelt, because I knew Ron McKinley. He is, he was an amazing nonprofit philanthropic leader in the community, and I had the privilege to be part of a leadership program. I'm pretty sure it was Shannon, James Shannon Leadership Program that was at Wilder Foundation at the time, but now it's kind of on its own. And he, I don't know, he was the founder of Minnesota Education Equity Partnership. Used to be called, it's a different name, I can't, I can't remember the old name now that we got the new name, but he was the founder. It was his vision of kind of having thirty-something years ago, a organization very grounded in race equity. So, it's, it's an honor to kind of continue his legacy, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. If there's no further business before the board, we stand adjourned.